So we gotta get.
So when I hear about, when I hear about, you know, floor levels. The floor room.
Honest there. Doesn't it?
You know what I mean?
It looks six.
You have us muted, right?
Jamie, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead, Jamie.
All right. Do we have any comments from public comments either written or anyone in person that wishes to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay. And I should just for the sake of the folks on both video and in person that may have arrived later. We did the pledge at five o'clock, so we started our meeting already with the pledge of allegiance as we do every meeting. All right, I'm going to turn it over now and I think it's, is it Tracy for the best communities for music, the recognition?
It's actually Dave.
Dave, okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Jamie, and it's my pleasure to introduce Doug Schmidt, fourth generation owner of Schmidt Music. Doug lives in Wayzata, but has a lot of connections to Hudson in the St. Croix Valley. Schmidt Music has been a wonderful partner for the school district for many years. We appreciate that all they do for our teachers and our students. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug, who's here to recognize our district and our music teachers for their remarkable accomplishments. Doug, it's all to you.
Thank you. As you just said, my name is Doug Schmidt and I'm one of the fourth generation owners of Schmidt Music. And I'm here with you today to help you celebrate the fine work that keeps happening in your music department for the 10th year in a row. I'd like to thank middle school general music teacher Leann Stein, superintendent Nick Olet, along with all of our friends from the Hudson Public Schools, from all your friends at Schmidt Music, including my brother Tom and me, two of our sons Pete and Ted, Sarah Nicholson, our Woodbury store manager, and the person who are most likely the senior schools, Jordan Swantek, our school service specialist. At Schmidt Music, we just celebrated our 124th anniversary on November 16. We are in the music products industry, which includes instrument companies, publishers, retailers, and everyone else involved in helping you to be able to teach your students the fine art of music. Our music products industry has a trade association called the National Association of Merchants, or just NAM, which was established in 1901, just five years after our company was started. NAM is the association that strengthens the $17 billion global music products industry. In 1998, NAM established their Best Communities for Music Education Award. In 2020, its 22nd year, this program celebrates and recognizes innovative and resourceful music education programs in the United States and those schools and communities that support them. In order to apply for this award, Leann Stein completed a 54-page survey that covers pretty much every aspect of your music education program. This survey was developed in partnership with the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Survey questions are aligned with equity and access to music education for all students and also with national standards for music education. In 2020, just 754 school districts earned this award out of more than 14,000 school districts in the United States. Of these 754 winners, 20 are serviced by Schmidt Music. Hudson in the top 5% of music programs in the nation, bravo. Leann Stein, Nick Olet, David Grambo, Tim Minor, and I to get your awards printed, framed, and delivered to everyone we could think of who was instrumental in making your music department so awesome for the 10th year in a row. If for any reason we may have missed someone or made a spelling mistake, please alert Leann and she can contact me so I can make those corrections and get new awards to you ASAP. Before I go, NAM loves to get pictures of people who win their awards. So if you're on camera and have your award handy, please raise it up, shout hip, hip, hooray for the Hudson Music Department. I'll count on one of you to grab a screenshot or some other means of getting me some pictures. Cheers, keep up your great work, and thanks for your ongoing great support of Schmidt Music.
Hey. Thank you. You, Doug, for the, for the honor, for the award and for your partnership. We are very prideful of our music department here at Hudson and we're very proud of the students that achieve under that. So thank you for your partnership there. Any other comments from board members? All right. Thank you for coming to our meeting and thank you for the awards.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up, I believe it's going to be Erin for this equity award that you're going to announce.
Yep, thank you. So tonight we have Kelly Curtis, school counselor from EP Rock Elementary. We're excited to recognize her tonight. Kelly was the 2021 Equity in Action Award winner through WISCA. And so this award is meant to recognize a school counselor who has made significant contributions to the advancement of equity and education for students in Wisconsin. I'll let her talk a little bit about the data that she used, but just wanted to share, I had the opportunity to meet with Kelly on Friday for a few minutes. And what struck me the most was that the, the way that she talks about this project and the way that she gives credit to her colleagues. And so she spoke about her colleagues' open willingness to have uncomfortable conversations and be vulnerable in terms of discussing what, what students need and what the impact of practices that we have in school, which may not serve us very well anymore. And so that was really just impactful to me. And of course, in true Kelly fashion, just giving credit away to everyone else. So I'll turn it over to Kelly.
You can. You can. While you're talking, then push that button. There you go. Okay. So I think I did the button the right way. Yes, I, I am really excited about this award because it's the first time it's been, it's been awarded by WISCA. And I think it really helps to put focus on something that we need to put focus on. And I wouldn't have been focusing on equity so much if it hadn't been, you know, leaders in my school and in our, our community that really said that that was an important thing to do. So when we started digging into data, and for me, it's usually behavioral data because as a school counselor, that's kind of what we do. I don't know that I would have acknowledged that that was something I needed to do. So I really have to give credit to, you know, our building principals and then the work that we've done at the district level to, you know, to learn about this, to understand and to have hard conversations. I mean, you know, we, before COVID hit in the spring, we were doing some really good training about cultural responsiveness and asking ourselves some questions that are, you know, I mean, do, do, do our, what we want to be happening, does that match up with what is actually happening? And so, so anyway, I do feel like there's just a lot going on that's, that's really good. And like our elementary team especially is so wonderful at just kind of jumping on, on board with things that really are important and make sense. So I know that part of the data that was really kind of talked about in this, this award was, so I acknowledge that there was some, there is a behavioral gap in data where there was, there were more, more office discipline referrals going to minorities, specifically black and multiracial students. And so at that time it was Amy Hamburg and I were really kind of digging into that, you know, what does this mean? We're disaggregating data. We're saying what, you know, why is this happening? And what we found was that a lot, the parallel there was that it was also new students. So we really, really improved on the new student programming, you know, beefed that up. And then we're able to kind of help students that were coming into the building, learn our norms, you know, learn our way of doing things. And then of course, the other piece that has been going for years is us working with staff to recognize our own biases because we all have them. And so I think that's what the example that you gave was, you know, so telling that we, and it was such, something so simple as crazy hair day. You know, we're doing the PBIS thing where kids are putting tickets in buckets to, to pick which thing we're going to focus on or which thing we're going to celebrate with. Well, it turns out the crazy hair day is actually a microaggression against, you know, against minorities. And we, I wouldn't have known that except that I had two different staff members come up to me and say, you know what? I just read this article and they came at different times. They didn't even know about each other. To say, you know, Kelly, I just wonder, you know, I was, didn't know if I should say anything, da, 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 da. But you know, I, I don't, I think it's wrong. We shouldn't do wrecky hair day. We should come up with a different way. And I was just like, thank you for saying that, for, you know, for acknowledging that there's something that we could maybe do something a little differently. So we have those courageous conversations all the time and I, I just, I'm glad that I work in a school in a district that is like encouraging those conversations to happen.
Very good. All right. Congratulations on your award and I'll open it up to other board members if they want to have comments.
I like that. I, I like the expression courageously addressing things that you don't know about or issues, you know, that, that produces a little curiosity and that takes you into some important arenas. Thank you for that.
I'll just say congrats on the award. It's remarkable and it is good to have courageous conversations and difficult conversations. We, we do that as a board from time to time and good to do that with Grace as well. So thanks for your leadership in the district.
Any, any other comments? All right. Well, I want to thank you again for your work in this area and congratulations on the award.
Hey, Mr. President. Before we move on to our, our athletics recognition, I wonder if we could back up to music. As much as I appreciate the framed certificate for our support, the work is not done by us. And I realize that there are some folks in this room who actually do the everyday work that generates these great musical awards. So I wonder if we could just take a minute to let them introduce themselves and get that recognition that they deserve.
Thank you, Heather, for alerting me the fact that they were in the room. Maybe Dave can introduce them.
You bet. And actually what, if we're going to have you come up to the, the table here and introduce yourself, we're fortunate enough to have all three levels represented. So it'd be great to, to hear directly from them.
Okay. I'm Leann Stein, Middle School General Music, and the 54 page was not that big of a deal, really. It, uh, as a music staff, I think that can speak for us, we are just so grateful for your support, for the community's support. And we like what we do. So this is, this is not work. This is a joy for us. So thank you.
My name is Rebecca Huth and I am representing the elementary music teachers. I travel between, goodness sake, between EP Rock and River Crest. I struggle between Willow River and River Crest. If you have any more schools, don't put River in both of them. Sorry about that. And it's just a pleasure to be a part of the elementary music staff in this district. Just a fabulous, fabulous team, especially with COVID. We've had to really adjust the way that we do things in the classroom as I'm sure that my colleagues here will, will agree to. And it's been just, just incredible to have such a wonderful staff to, to work together with as a team to benefit these students.
Good evening. I'm Ryan McCarthy. I'm one of the band directors at the high school and representing the instrumental side of things. I've been here for a while and been able to help be a part of continuing to make sure that the, the programs all across have, have been held to a high standard to make sure that we, you know, Hudson has a proud tradition of excellence with their music programs. And it's, you know, this, this award is a bit of a testament to that, to be recognized from the outside as well as in, on the inside on a night like tonight. It is very gratifying and to hear from Doug Schmidt and he's been around for a long time and understands as well as a, a big thanks to Leann for, despite what she says, she still filled out a 54-page application and has done it multiple times. I mean, there should be a separate award for that. There really should be, but you know, you, you've got some of the hardest working individuals in the music department from K all the way through 12. And this is, this is a nice honor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee, for your efforts.
And Mr. President, if I could just jump in just for a second. This music team is amazing and they represent a much larger team. And previously we were talking about our value statements and one of those value statements was collaboration. And the statement behind that is collective commitment to common interest and goals. And that speaks directly to the music team. They are amazingly collaborative when they work together as a K-12 team. They do phenomenal work and just appreciate the fact that they go out of their way to make sure that all three levels are connected. And that can be challenging because you're separated by buildings and schedules and everything else, but they do a great job with that and it's very much appreciated.
All right. Thank you for those extra comments.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I want the marching band released back on the streets behind the school, please, soon, hopefully. Miss them.
There was a, you know, we, we just decided it was time and the weather was, wasn't getting nice enough soon enough. So we did a little, little, little thing like eight inches of snow slow us down. So if you're not sure what we're talking about, I'm going to get some pictures and some video to Tracy for the completely staged fun night that we had in the stadium. But I'm glad that it was noted and it, true to form, the kids worked, went out there and worked really hard and we only lost one cell phone in the snow. So, but it was found and it, it was good. So with, now that we've got the blessing from, from you, we're, we're ready to go. So thank you.
All right, I'm assuming that Aaron Moan is making his way up to the mic or is he on Zoom?
Hi, Jamie.
Hey, Aaron. The floor is yours, sir.
Up is on, right? Okay. So I've got three student leaders here with me tonight. I just wanted to take some time on the front end and preface what we're here for, being winter athletics recognition. But most of all, thank this group for, for inviting us tonight. It was definitely a season like no other. And so many successes came out of those challenges that this group had to have difficult conversations around. Can we do this? Can we not? How can we do it safely? All of those were well worth it. In addition to these three student leaders and their peers taking a stance of, we're going to do it, we're going to do it the right way and being tremendous leaders is everything that we needed this year to be able to come and get to this point. So thank you ahead of time for that. I'm going to provide a collective overview of the department, but the important thing is our students are going to talk about their perspective in a year that none of us could really imagine as being a, a high school student. So I'm very interested and I'll, I'll hurry up to get to the, the good stuff from them. But I think collectively, this was probably one of the most successful winter seasons we've had. We were able to do many things that we would in a normal year, but being able to say that is, is impressive to me. We were able to recognize our top GPA in each sport. Those students do a tremendous job focusing on being high performers, both in the classroom and on the field, court, rink, wherever they're competing. And that's a tremendous accomplishment because there are many students right behind them that are very close to being able to get that award as well. So it's very competitive. We also had four more athletes sign their national letter of intent, which is Division One or Two Scholarship. One of them is in the room today. Which brought our total up to 15 total students up to this point for Division One and Two, which is absolutely amazing. We also had two of our fall athletes get recognized as all-state academic. In order to do that, you need to have a 3.5 GPA or higher and compete in the state race. So congratulations to Haley and Tony for that. I know my formatting got a little bit off in this, but the last thing I wanted to overview is we created this image just to show our unified accomplishments as a group. And I think it, it really truly highlights the collective efforts of so many people. When you start going through each of these accolades highlighted by two state championship appearances, 14 individual state qualifiers, down through high numbers of all-conference awards, academic all-conference awards, individual accomplishments of 1,000 points, 100 wins in wrestling. It truly is energizing. So I think just that image alone speaks to the dedication of everyone involved in doing their part to make this opportunity possible for our kids. So thank you very much for that. And I will introduce, well, they'll introduce themselves. We have three students coming up to talk about that experience.
I think we still got the button on, so there's not much to screw up there. So that's good. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I know a lot of you since I was young, one of you since I was very, very young. So my name is Ethan Hanson and I just want to start out by saying thank you for having us in front of the great Hudson Council as well as just helping coordinate all the stuff for us to be able to play sports and especially just be in school. There's so many kids who I'm friends with who haven't even been in their school since the year started. And, you know, it's just so difficult and for us to be able to do all of these things and be able to participate in sports has just been so awesome. I also wanted to say, I know just a while back, you guys helped to fund getting new filters for the, the pool. And that was just so tremendous. This year, last year, we had a few cases where kids couldn't come to practice anymore for a while because their lungs were just so, you know, coughing all the time. And so to be able to have just an awesome season and to see the results, truly fantastic. I, I wrote down a few things just to mention here. Now we'll get on to the others. But we finished sixth in state this year, which is the highest we've ever done, as well as we took down three school records. There's I think 16 or so different events and we took down three of those, three of those records, which is just truly awesome. Again, just having sports being an awesome break from, you know, just homework and other stressors in life. It was just truly awesome to be able to step out on the pool deck and forget all those other things and just be able to safely participate in sports with, with some of my friends. We also had no COVID cases on the team. We had a few contact tracing situations, but we got, we got that all figured out. And I think we didn't have so many challenges this season as I thought we were going to have. Our previous captains have just all been awesome. And so the four captains, myself, Adam Berusko, Jonathan Bennett, and Stephen Asmus, we all just collectively had to keep passing on the torch. We've just had so many other great people before us who have, who have set things up. And we just had to, you know, keep leading our team and, and a lot of the guys have already, you know, no matter how fast they are, everyone comes and works and puts in the work this, every, every single year. And it's just been so awesome. However, it's been a little difficult to just keep the team morale up with, you know, usually we'll have big spaghetti dinners and stuff and we'll all just eat until, I mean, it's probably not good for us the next day. But it's, it's always been awesome. And so to have, not have that this year has been a little rough, but we've been able to work around it and, and have safe ways to get together. You see some of us, especially Theo up there, he's got the mask on his forehead too. Got to be extra safe. So we, we had just a lot of, a lot of fun things. And this year we actually lifted five times a day, or five, not five times a day. Yeah, we get really, really strong on the swim team. With five times a week. And so that was a total curve ball. A lot of us that first week were just contemplating coming back. But it was just an awesome season and, and thank you again so much for having us and for all the work that you guys have put in to make this possible.
Hi, I'm Sophia Jonas and I'm a senior representing Hudson Girls Basketball. And I want to start off with thank you guys as well, because without you guys, we wouldn't be having a season this year and we wouldn't have been able to make the run that we did. I'm going to start off by saying a couple of challenges that we had this year. Definitely the mask. It was really hard at first and then eventually we got used to it where when we went to state, we didn't even notice we were wearing them, which was cool. Another challenge was with the limited spectators that there was, it wasn't as much energy in the gym. So our bench had to pick up the slack, you know? And I don't know if you guys are able to see it, but our bench was most likely the craziest bench out of everyone we played. And then another big challenge we had was we lost one of our seniors due to a meniscus tear. And she tore it actually in the first game, Grace O'Brien is her name. And she was a starter and she tore it in the first game, but she didn't find out that she tore it until halfway through the season. So we already got used to playing with her and having her on the team and then our starter was taken out. So we definitely had to pick up that, our game and we knew we all had to like collectively come as a group to rally around her. Some positives we had was even though we didn't get to do the summer bonding or the spaghetti dinners, like Ethan said, we still were able to make the most out of the season. And to recap a little bit, we went undefeated in conference. That was our first step. Then our second step was try to go undefeated in the season, which we also accomplished. And then we went to regionals and we were able to defeat two conference teams who usually we play someone else that isn't a conference team in regionals. So that was kind of new for us this year. And then we moved on to sectionals and we were able to win both those games to go to state. And we had four players who were all-conference and then two players who ended up in the all-state team. And then at state, we were able to get to the championship. And even though we didn't get the gold ball, none of us regret any of it. We would never change a thing. It was such an awesome season. And I thought a really cool part of the season was the community that rallied around us. For the playoff game to go to state, we had 3,500 plus people watching on the live stream. And that's not counting the people that were actually in the gym. And then another cool thing was when we had our send-off to go to state, there was hundreds of people outside after our practice. We walked out and people were just screaming. The band was even there playing for us and we had, we were led out by a police escort, which was super cool. And then I'll end with, thank you guys again for allowing the season to happen because it was the best season I've had all my four years being a high school athlete.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Caroline Erickson. I'm going to be representing the gymnastics team. And a couple of things I'd like to start off with is of course, thank you for allowing us to have a season. I mean, it's definitely complicated and there are a bunch of different things that we had to just go with the flow with. But overall, we had a great season and I wouldn't have changed it for like the world. Our team is super close. There's only eight girls on the team as of right now, which is, except for last year, which was kind of a mess, but except the, the smallest team that we've ever had. But I wouldn't change it for the world. Everyone has their own individual talents and we all worked through that. And our coach is wonderful and knows how to play off of that in a way that I've never had a coach know how to do that before. She's just like the ma, like the best coach I could have ever asked for. And I hope that in future seasons, we can like, like grow on that because we had three girls qualify for state and we don't have a floor. And we qualified for floor. So that's a feat in itself. And I think with the facilities, it would help and benefit other, all the gymnasts ahead. And like, I am so thankful for the space that we have right now and for Moe and to figure out how to do everything because it is complicated. And I mean, I am one to push. So like, just to have him listen and make it work is just wonderful. And I mean, it is frustrating because normally we go to Crowley's, which is a gym in Minnesota, but all the gyms in Minnesota closed this year. So we didn't have the facility to actually train. We had one beam, a set of bars and a tumble strip, which is enough for eight girls, but you can only do so much with that. And it'd be wonderful just to see like the program grow again to where it was at before. Cause my sophomore season, we went to state and there was 15 girls on the team and we placed six. And yeah, and there was like a couple of girls who placed top 20. So I mean, that was a big change coming off of that from last year. But I think we're growing and I think that we can overall just like get better and just like see the program grow and have gymnasts who maybe would have stayed in club, come to high school instead, just because they liked the girls so much and they love. and they love the coach because I, I wouldn't have changed it for the world and how I ended my season. And I just want to end off with like, thank you and thank you for allowing us to have this like opportunity to compete because I know this year it wasn't the easiest to make happen.
I would just, I would just like to add one more thing because Caroline made a really, really good point. Um, coaches are incredible and we couldn't be anywhere without our coaches. Um, so I just wanted to say, um, Coach Ross, Coach Gary, and then our uh training uh weightlifting coach, Coach Nick, um, just really created an incredible season for us and and um helped prepare us really well. And then also, um, again, your help, but then also Mr. Moe and um, we couldn't have really done any of this and it was awesome to have you there for really everything that we did as we went through. Um, even from when we were younger, I'll still um hold a grudge. You gave me a nineteen point five out of twenty in the swimming unit when you were teaching me in middle school. But, but since then, since then, it's been fantastic. Um, so, so thank you very much. And um, I'm sure Sophia, thank you to your coaches.
Yeah, my coaches this year, we had a collective group of four coaches and they worked so well together and it was so cool to like have all of them at our practices with all the girls. Um, and then another thanks to Moe and uh and the administration um for making this season happen because it was definitely worth my while.
And I think I'd also like to give appreciation to our trainer, Megan. She has picked up everyone and has helped everyone through all our injuries and just helped made sure that we're okay first of all, and then helped us get to the point where we could. I strained my Achilles this year and I was, I was out on crutches for two weeks. And then I had to eventually get back into this season. But um, she was there. She taped me every day at practice, no matter what. I would be running in and she'd be trying to get to a boys hockey game, but she'd stay there until I was there in order to get taped. And so she really pulled through and she doesn't get the recognition she deserves because she definitely deserves it.
Right. One last time, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, I want to thank our three presenters and uh, Ethan, anytime you want to stand in for your edit, one of these meetings, you're welcome. So.
That would be very unwise, but okay.
Do we have, is there any more um than on winter athletics? I want to congratulate all of our uh athletes, coaches, everyone who participates and really puts Hudson literally on the map. We really appreciate your, your participation and your successes as well. All right. Thank you.
Go Raiders.
Next up, we have the.
Teenously motivating.
And happy birthday, Aaron.
Yeah, thank you for that, Kerry. I didn't realize that.
Yep, no, no problem. So just a COVID operational update. I'm getting my mask off without throwing my hyrenades on the ground. Um, so uh a cou- a couple of things I want to touch on. Um, so we are starting to, we are starting to look at what next year looks like. Um, we know that uh it's, it's gonna be different than this year. Um, you know, we know that, you know, we will offer probably some type of virtual option as, as we look forward, but uh it's, it's probably not gonna look like it does this year. Um, you know, I don't, we, you know, we just haven't gotten that far into this conversation. So we are starting to start to have those conversations. Um, in addition, um, graduation, we, you know, graduation, we're gonna try it outside, uh, see what, see what happens. Uh, and if we have to go because we don't have weather, then it'll be split into two ceremonies inside um on the same day so that that way, um, you know, we kind of went back and forth on, you know, how do you how do you allow kids to graduate with their friends and how do you manage all those different moving pieces? And so the thought was maybe we would just stick, try to go outside. We haven't gone outside in at least the six years that I've been here. I know we did before I got here when we were at Newton Field. And so uh, we're gonna, we're gonna give it a shot and and see what happens. Um, but then again, you know, we'll probably have to make that call about, we said about twenty-four or forty-eight hours ahead of time. If the weather doesn't look like it's gonna cooperate, we won't set it up outside, we'll set it up inside and and it'll be two separate ceremonies, just uh separated by alphabet is, you know, is kind of the direction, I think. Um, proms, uh, I think the uh high school team heard you guys loud and clear. They'll be running two proms, uh, so that is uh, as many people that want to attend prom can, can attend prom. It will be um, they're surveying the students to find out best dates, but it will happen after, after graduation sometime. But it won't be a senior prom and then a junior prom. It'll be just trying to split down to number of people, not necessarily, you know, junior or senior. Um, it's obviously junior, senior prom, but they'll be able to bring their dates. And if they happen to have underclassmen or happen to have uh kids that have graduated as well. Um, couple other items on here, just as a heads up, uh, the vaccination update, uh, we had like eighty-eight to ninety percent of our staff that uh said they wanted to get a, wanted to get a vaccine. We would believe by the end of this, uh, by the end of this week, we would believe that all that have wanted a vaccine uh will have uh either gotten their first or first and second dose by the end of this week. Um, and so I, I can't uh give enough uh appreciation and praise to Hudson physicians for all their work on putting this together and Andrea's department putting this together. And um, it's uh really puts us in a great spot. I know there are a lot of districts, even in our county that are, aren't able to get really any of their staff still not able to get them vaccinated yet. And so um, we, we feel pretty comfortable in saying that anybody that wanted one should have been able to get one by the end of this week. And so that's a, that's a good position to be in um as we continue to move forward. Uh, wanna kind of related to uh that uh as well, numbers at the high school. Um, so just uh, you know, our COVID numbers for the most part have been um pretty good. Um, but you know, we have had an uptick in numbers at the high school this last two week period. Uh, we've had, you know, sixteen total cases at the high school over the last two weeks. Um, still not necessarily, um, I mean, just to put it in perspective, in November, December, we were hitting about thirty, thirty-two cases at the high school in a two week period. Uh, so uh, much higher than we were last two weeks, which was three and two. And so we're gonna continue to keep an eye on those things. Um, we're able to do the contact racing, we're able to kind of figure out where those are related. Um, what we can say is with, with uh fairly good certainty is that we have not had people get COVID um as it relates to being in close contact, only a school related close contact, other than we had one situation uh where it was an environment where masks were not able to be worn. Um, and an individual did happen to contracted from another individual and without giving too many specifics about that, but um uh, we, we can say we're extremely confident that uh in all situations where the only type of close contact was because they were just at school with each other. Uh, we have not seen any spread or any positive cases. That doesn't mean that we haven't seen kids that are on the same team get it or kids that ride in a carpool together get it or um, you know, kids that hang out on the weekends get it. So I'm not saying kids are immune to it. I'm just saying when their only uh interaction is, is school related, uh, we're not seeing, we're not seeing the spread. And so, which is very positive. Um, and, and it's been, you know, really great uh being able to keep, keep the buildings open and and going ahead. I've had listening sessions last week and a half, the different buildings. It's been a lot of fun talking with staff. It's been a lot of uh positiveness, a lot of thank yous, I think, as it's continually hitting uh people as, as uh especially Minnesota schools are just starting to go back for a lot of them. Start to realize what kind of a mo- momentous accomplishment this has been, you know, for our staff and for our kids and for our community to be in school the whole year. And so uh, that's, it's really a lot of fun to have those conversations with staff. Not that it hasn't been hard, not that it hasn't been a struggle at times, but uh that people have risen, risen to that struggle. Um, one of the things that we are gonna potentially look at is after, after April first, we may look at kind of how we handle contact tracing and and some of the different uh parameters around that as we continue to kind of look at our data and what's uh what spread looks like and things along those lines. But we want to make sure we have a good, you know, seven to ten days after uh everybody gets back from spring break uh to make sure that, you know, we're in a good spot, that if we're going to make any modifications to anything, we want to make sure that we are um following that. And so some of this is just kind of an ongoing conversation. It's with, you know, with the team and with the nurses and and also talking with public health as to how do we start to adjust uh different things as needed and not like, you know, let's just rip, rip the Band-Aid off and just get rid of all mitigation strategies. That doesn't make much sense. But looking at, at different things that we can do as a district and and trying little baby steps at things and then seeing how things go and then making more adjustments and things like that as we, as we work through it. And then the last thing I want to touch on with the COVID nineteen update is the community sport. We've had tremendous community sport. Um, Tracy worked with the group um that, that um kind of shepherd in this Love a Raider uh shirts. And I think you've seen those on social media. Um, a lot of local business owners that contributed to that. They not only um bought shirts for every staff member in the district, they also uh sent cookies and and things like that. We've had tremendous uh support from our parent groups and in different groups. And so it really has been um, you know, a, a team effort across the board. And so we're, we're extremely happy with that. And so that's the community sport's been very good. And like you said, the, the Love a Raider shirts uh I know are very appreciated by staff. And then I think, you know, the last thing, it's not really necessarily COVID operational, but it, it has been something that's really lifted spirits is been our wellness initiatives that Andrea's been leading. Um, is people have really, really, really gotten into that. I mean, they really, they're really getting after it. Uh, Carrie, the fact that she did an Ironman in one day with the triathlon and the uh biking and and the whole nine yards, that was quite impressive. Um, you know, the, well, you know, it's, it, it's, you know, she catapulted the Board Stiff team, which uh, which is made of the board members here. Uh, wellness team, you know, catapult them forward. You know, some of us more honest people, the cabinet team and I, you know, we uh, we don't do that. But hey, you know, whatever works for you, whatever works. But uh, no, it's been a great process. There's been a lot of prizes and things like that. Andrea's done tremendous work. And right now she's working on a cookbook, staff-wide cookbook that is gonna be going up. It's a hundred page, a hundred different recipes that are gonna be going out tied to wellness and and things like that. And the, the pictures, uh, hopefully you had an opportunity to review the, the picture challenge and things that um, you know, people think of kind of their happy place and and things like that, which was really, really great. And I think we're wrapping up the wellness challenges that this week. And, and, and the Ed Foundation, yes, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the Ed Foundation. They did uh provide the district with, I think, ten thousand dollars uh to help um, you know, finance a lot of the gifts and things like that that are, and the prizes related to the wellness challenges. And so uh, the employees, I mean, they, people really get after these things. And um Andrea has in her office quite a bit of pot. I mean, um, not, not pot. Um, she has a lot of pots. Uh, there, what am I trying to say here? You know, Ryan, if we could go and delete that part, if we could delete that part uh off, off the broadcast. Yeah, I know. I know. I, I wanted to talk about the neat gifts that happened to be planted. Pots that are in Andrea's office uh that, that her team has been putting together, not um, yeah. That's all we need is now Bob hanging out the H R office, just kind of wanted to, so, but uh, no, in all seriousness, it's been great and um it has been a really a team effort with, with all those things. It's lifted people's spirits through, through COVID. So we'll have to go through and edit out the, the other, the other pieces of the meeting. So any, yeah. I appreciate that. Yeah. Yes. So with that being said, any questions about, you know, COVID update, COVID report or where we're at right now with everything? Any medicinal, yes.
All right. All right. Thanks for the report and uh, I think that I got out of the most important thing on there. Well, I thank Andrea for all her efforts. Um, I just, and no excuses on why Board Stiff is a little behind. Um, I won't go, go into those excuses. Uh, we can do that later. But I, I just think the main takeaway is we cannot let our guard down when it comes to these mitigation strategies and uh people saw our, our cases, numbers going way down, but uh, yeah, we saw that they can pop up pretty fa- fast. So um, anyway, thanks for all your efforts there. Turning it over to reports and uh it's a state education convention. And I saw Rob in his evening meal, but I think he's done chewing. So I would look for him, maybe Heather and maybe Tracy to carry the water on this because while I did attend uh the convention, I mean, just my personal circumstances over the last four days not allowed me to prevent, present the report I wanted to. So I don't know, Rob, um, I certainly know you have news about what happened with the resolution we proposed and whatnot. And I know I attended a session with both, well, one with Tracy and one with um Heather. So anyway, I'll, I'll let them chime in what their takeaways were from the state convention. But Rob, can you just tell us about the school penny um resolution?
Sure. And uh, thanks for asking. The one cent sales tax uh had frankly, it was a rigorous debate. Um, a lot of good interaction. Um, but, but frankly, there's a lot of support for it. And I know our superintendent has been speaking with uh other superintendents and building support there as well. But our, our one cent sales tax resolution uh did pass and uh will uh be carried by our uh legislative lobbyists to the state for consideration.
Pretty big deal. Excellent. Thanks.
It's a very big deal.
I mean, it really is, right? I mean, think about it. How, how long have we been?
Bruce, you're muted.
Sorry, James.
How long have we been bringing that forward?
This was our second year.
Did, we've been talking about it longer than that though, have we not?
We have, we have.
Yeah, I just, I, I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's great. Um, I think it's a great accomplishment. I think it's um, it's one of those things to just courageously keep going. So, you know, uh, nice job and and way to kind of frame it up and and get everyone behind that. So Rob, thanks for uh being our spokesperson too, man.
Great. Way to go, Rob.
No, thank you. Thank you. I'd also like to give uh, you know, Nick uh kudos that this was his brainchild and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to support, but uh, you know, we wouldn't be here without Nick's leadership. Um, you figure, I forget what it is, Nick, is it one point four billion? Something one point four, one point five billion dollars that could go to Wisconsin schools for property tax relief, for facilities, technology, stuff other than general fun, fun time stuff. Just it, it, it would be an absolute wonderful opportunity for all of us.
Yeah. What's, what are the next steps that need to happen?
What are the next steps that need to happen there?
So the, our lobbyists, um, well, actually Nick, would you mind sharing with everybody what the next steps are?
Uh, yeah, I'm, our lobbyists are working with legislators on it. I've been uh reaching out to different legislators on it as well. Um, it has been uh sent to um the fiscal bureau to do a uh a full fiscal analysis on it. Um, it is, it does have some traction, traction amongst uh some legislators. Um, and, and I think, you know, it's, it's, it may not happen, you know, this session or the next session, but I think it's just constantly keeping it in front of them. Uh, and, and talking about it because uh, you know, having experienced this coming from another state, it, it really is a uh, when you talk about equity equalizer as far as uh equity of opportunities for kids. And when you're talking about uh instructional spaces and things like that, it, it really helps those, those pieces. So Rob did a great job, like I said, uh, carrying, carrying the water on this thing. Um, you know, we got shot down last year and then as we did a little bit more work on the front end this time, uh, both him, uh, you know, he did talk and reaching out to districts and yeah, me reaching out to some folks. Uh, we were able to get that, get that support. So we'll continue to kind of push on it. And now that the lobbyists are, you know, will at least get it into their lobbying packet. Um, that, that helps as we move forward. Go ahead, Bob.
So can we, I know the reasoning behind some people here, you know, sales tax, uh, tax. So I mean, is there, is there a way we can better communicate our reasoning for um, looking at this and just how it makes things more fair throughout the state for especially districts like us who are punished uh when it comes to funding and and what we pay in and what we get back?
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at, you know, what's the best way to kind of deliver the, you know, the um, the communication plan on that. And, and I think that's uh, that's been the ongoing conversation that I've had with different districts as we've talked about it is it really is an opportunity to kind of, you know, um, spread it around a little bit for all districts because we do get, we do get punished when it comes to property tax and, you know, because our property values are so high. It, it's just kind of continually takes it away from us and as we look at that. So, yeah, we'll continue to kind of work through that.
One more thing I'd just like to say, as I was delegate when it failed the first time. I'm glad that Rob moved it forward and I would suggest if he's on the board next, he's, he's our delegate.
All right. Uh, thanks for again, the report. Good job. Uh, but Tracy, Heather, do you have any comments? I mean, I thought the sessions were good. It's just that it's not the same on, on Zoom um as it is. It's just that it's not the same on on Zoom as it is in person and the ability to get side conversations going, but.
I I I will just type in with one thing, oh, two things. One, a lot of the materials are available in download of the PDF. So if any of you who didn't make it really wanted to have the handouts from the four hour school finance session, we could get those for you, just just saying. Um, no, I, you know, I attended a couple of sessions on things like student voice and freedom of speech, on board superintendent relationships, on planning and measurement. And now this is the third or the fourth year, I guess, that I've gone. And I think this year more than ever, I left those sessions feeling like, you know what? Our leadership team really knows what it's doing. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, they were sharing really good information and there wasn't a lot that was new or that I felt like we were off base about. So to me, it was just really reaffirming. And I know a lot of districts have much smaller leadership teams. And so the board has to be more involved in some of this. But to me, it was just really reaffirming about the fact that we have a an administrative team that is pretty darn top rate and is doing great work for us. So so thank you to all of you.
Thanks.
I I got to sit in on a session with Heather where she was, she was chatting away. So you got a chance to kind of chat throughout, you know, I think it was a leadership one, if I'm not mistaken, on the last day. But it was nice because they did try and at least interact with you, which it's hard to do. I mean, normally when you're at the conference, right, you're able to kind of talk and engage and they they really encourage that. But when you're sitting in your house, you know, watching these things, it 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 was nice to find those that that they were working actively to engage with you. So those good. I I only made it to a few. I mean, it's, it's interesting how work can seep in the way of what you're trying to get done outside.
All right. Tracy, did you have anything, Dan?
I would just from a presenter standpoint, yes, it was hard to present and not have that interaction other than the the chat. The one thing I did hear from colleagues, certainly everybody wants to get back to that face to face interaction, but that for some board members, it was easier to attend this year because it was virtual. So it was interesting to hear from some folks who appreciated having that option who ordinarily wouldn't have attended.
All right. Any other comments about state convention, otherwise I'll turn it over to Dave then and our language arts update.
I'll add something, Jamie. Just wanted to comment on Tracy's presentation with her colleagues. It was, it was excellent. Some really great messages, some that are very, very simple, straightforward, but sometimes you don't always think of. So just want to congratulate Tracy on that presentation.
Thank you.
Good job, Tracy. All right. Well, then, Dave, you have our last report of the night before we go to the action items on the agenda, and that's elementary ELA.
Thank you, Jamie. Yep. So a little peek behind the exciting, the curtain of the exciting life of a curriculum and instruction professional. So we have a very gracious staff. Teachers are always very thankful for what we do when they recognize what we do. But it is rare that you go through a building and have teachers pop out of their room to thank you for a new curricular resource. And that is absolutely happening with our new elementary curriculum, Fontis and Pennell Classroom. It's amazing to see the excitement that teachers have for a curricular resource because here's the deal, a new curricular resource means a lot of new work for a teacher. It takes a lot of time to implement something, especially elementary literacy, which is a massive portion of the elementary day. And Lisa will get into that a little bit when she's presenting this. But the teachers recognize the quality of the the literature, the quality of the learning experiences that are built into the resource. And at every school, we've had teachers that go out of their way to thank us for this. So which really speaks to the quality of the program and also speaks to the quality of the implementation that Lisa and her team have been leading. It's been really outstanding. This is on the heels of an outstanding implementation of an elementary math curriculum that is yielding fantastic results. And we're pretty confident we're going to see similar results in literacy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Sgoian.
Hello. Tonight I would like to share an overview of our new elementary literacy resource, Fontis and Pennell Classroom or FPC. Last year, Willow River piloted Fontis and Pennell Classroom. After a successful pilot and positive feedback, the other five elementary schools joined Willow River this year in implementing FPC. Fontis and Pennell Classroom consists of seven instructional contexts. The interactive read aloud is a whole class activity in which the teacher reads a book to the class and engages children in authentic discussions about the text. The reading mini lessons are brief whole class lessons on topics of management, literary analysis, skills and strategies, and writing about reading. Phonics, spelling, and word study are brief whole group lessons that help children attend to, learn about, and efficiently use sounds, letters, and words. Shared reading is for our youngest learners, our K three students. Shared reading can be a whole group or a small group activity in which children join in reading a large print book or a chart aloud. That gives them the opportunity to engage in reading texts that may not, they may not be able to read independently. Book clubs are for our older students, our fourth and fifth grade students. Book clubs are a small group activity in which children choose a book to read and then come together for a small group discussion about the text. Guided reading is composed of a small group of children who read a challenging text at their instructional reading level, while the teacher demonstrates, prompts for, or reinforces reading behaviors, providing children an opportunity to apply what they have learned. And finally, independent reading. Children read text of their choice independently, allowing them to enjoy books, practice the reading process, and share their thinking about the books they are reading. The multiple contexts of instruction all fit together in a coherent way and offer students numerous opportunities to access complex, age appropriate texts and engage students in powerful discussions. All of the contexts are taught within Reader's Workshop. Here are the suggested time allotments for each FPC context. As you can see, we dedicate a large portion of the day to literacy instruction. Please note that some of the time allotments were adjusted this year due to COVID. We know that in order to teach to the strengths and needs of each child, educators within our district and within our school need to work in the same direction so a literacy, a child's literacy opportunities are coherent. We assess using the Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assess, Assessment System. We teach using the Fontis and Pennell Classroom. And we intervene using the leveled literacy intervention. All of these components rely upon and have been derived from the learning goals defined in the literacy continuum. The literacy continuum is the teacher's roadmap of how literacy develops in children over time and serves as the instructional anchor for assessment, planning, and teaching. The Fontis and Pennell Classroom Interactive Read Aloud Text Sets enhance social emotional learning, which is a focus for our district. The text set reflects a global perspective with diversity of characters, settings, themes, and topics. This slide shows the learning progression of kindness and empathy across the grades. On our February nineteenth Professional Learning Day, we held grade level meetings where teachers had the opportunity to discuss FPC with colleagues from all six elementary schools. This slide shows teacher feedback about two of the FPC contexts and the reading notebooks. Our final slide shows Fontis and Pennell Classroom in action in one of our elementary schools.
All right. And before we open it up for questions, we passed around some literature so we can get an example. And you see a sample of the different forms of literature that Lisa had mentioned in the different contexts of instruction that exist. And what you'll notice is really rich and diverse styles. And it's just their their authentic literature. This isn't, there is some literature that's designed specifically for the curriculum to teach a specific skill, but the vast majority is authentic literature that's been hand selected to meet those skills that are necessary, but then also to provide a really rich literature experience, which is fantastic. The other thing that that I want you to know as we're exploring all this is how amazing it is that the teachers are as appreciative as they are. They're rolling out the largest implementation you can have at the elementary level in this COVID environment and doing it with with just the the positive attitude, knowing it's really hard, but they're digging in and really enjoying it. Just can't thank our teachers enough for making it an excellent experience.
All right. Any questions?
Sue here, Jamie. Is it possible, Dave, that you could send us a written list of all the books you just handed out so we can, I gotta read the Frida Kahlo one over here.
Yeah, actually, what we could do is we could get you a comprehensive list, not just what we handed out, because this is just a small cross section. So we could get you a more comprehensive.
I would be curious, just be more familiar.
Yeah, you bet.
Um, and then I was just going to say that I, I have observed the at EP Rock, the kids giving book reports and and they're videotaped and that kind of thing. And they're just, it just makes them even more enthusiastic and probably pay attention to their reading. But I like that idea of the oral part two of reading aloud because no surprises, some people learn better orally and reading and have different learning styles. So I think, and and maybe for kids who have a different home language, it might even be good to hear where where the breaks are in the syllables and so on and pronouncing words. So I I just think this is a fabulous curriculum.
Thank you, Sue, for your comments. Rob.
So for GT students, how does, how does this work for them? Do they simply just go up a grade or as far as a curriculum?
Sure. Our GT students, of course, if you, if you think about the guided reading portion of the one of the contexts, so that's at their instructional level. So on the slide where we showed the assessment, the teachers administer the Benchmark Assessment System, and that gives us their instructional level. So we are teaching students where where they are instructionally, which could be in some cases above grade level. So this is, you know, a perfect example of differentiation within our classroom.
Thank you.
Any other questions then? There, I need to click through my my pictures here because I don't see everyone. All right. I don't think that there's any other questions, but thank you very much for your report and great job. This looks like great work and I'm sure we'll have, see the benefits of that in the years to come.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice job, Lisa.
All right. I will now move on to our action portion of the meeting. And first up is the consent items. And we ask that you incorporate the language for funding pursuant to the motion.
Ms. President?
Yes, Rob.
Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,487,216.73.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the consent items are approved, as is the motion for spending and.
Mr. President?
Yes, I was just going to ask you, ask you, Andrea, if we have any retirements or other recognitions.
We do have some retirements. We have Christine Larson, who is a math reading para, EP Rock, sixteen years of service. She'll be retiring at the end of the school year. As you know, support staff have a little different schedule when it comes to retirement. And so certified staff has already, that timeline has passed. Support staff, we have a little while longer. And then Cynthia Brinsco as well, she's a special ed para at our center based program in North Hudson, twenty two years of service in our district. So we'll be recognizing the spring, which is also a work in progress. We're continuing to evaluate what we can and can't do for our recognition of our retirees this spring and other people who have mile markers in terms of years of service. So.
Well, now that we've got, going to have 90% of our staff vaccinated, you know, by April, hopefully then we can proceed with something. Yes, Sue, you have a question?
Are you going to go ahead and comment on the the question I gave you earlier or should I ask it? About?
Um, if if.
Are you talking about the individuals?
Yeah, the resignations. Or is our conversation good enough?
I could say a couple of things real quick is that at this time of year, as part of our normal staffing process, we often get resignations in a higher volume for the conclusion of this year than we typically do other times of year. So it's part of the process where we work collaboratively with the staff. As you know, with our staffing conversations, it's, we've had to reduce some sections and some wish to resign in lieu. And so we provide that as an option. So not speaking to any particular one, but in terms of the numbers, it's certainly consistent with the timing of the year.
I would just say that, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I asked about it because usually our list is mostly like paras and people take caring, taking care of kids on the playground and so on. And I kind of forgot about this time of year and there's some, some dates coming up and all that. So thank you for kind of, you know, giving a little explanation.
Right. Next up, we have the Activities Code of Conduct, which was addressed at our last work session and at great detail. And Aaron, I'm assuming that's you.
Yeah. So you had a chance to review this. There were a couple of updates made to it. There was some duplicate language within that was fixed and then pronouns were updated as well.
Any questions of board members regarding those fixes? Any additional questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I didn't hear the second. I heard, okay, second by Rob then, all right. I'll go with the audible signal since I'm not there in person. All those in favor of adopting the the latest Activities Code of Conduct say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The recommendation of administration is approved. All right. Next up would be first reading of student policies.
Yep. Again, you had a chance to review these at the work session a couple of weeks ago. Just as a reminder, the updates that were made to these policies were really to clarify process. These are really process heavy set of policies. And so just to really clearly define the process that we would work through and then clarifying definitions so that they're user friendly for everyone who needs to access these policies. I do just want to talk, talk a little bit about the anti bullying policy. So four forty three point seven one is what the bullying policy was. But back in June, when we redid the nondiscrimination, equal education opportunities, we made the choice to put the bullying policy with that set so that it mirrored the personnel policies as well, so that those policies go together. And so this also was an opportunity for us to look at this policy again. We did our recommending that we add this introductory statement, really talking about strives to provide a safe, secure, did add some language around trauma sensitive since that's something that we're working really hard on. And then adding language within the definition to match our nondiscrimination statement.
Any questions? So I'm trying to click through again because we don't have full screen of the one have a question? All right. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the policies that we discussed again at length at our last work session. But again, this is a big section on that directly affect our students.
Mr. President, I move, I move that we accept the, approve the first reading of this section of the four hundred policy series.
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Sue, second by Bob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the first reading of these student policies is approved and will be approving second reading soon. I'll now entertain a motion to, uh, go convening to close session pursuant to the wording on the agenda. We have two separate bases in which to go into closed session this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985 parent one parent need to consider competitive bargaining with a certified union for the 2021, 22 school year. And B pursuant to Wisconsin, Wisconsin statute 1985, one parent one parent F to consider the financial, medical, social or personal histories of disciplinary data of specific persons or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public would likely to have substantial adverse effects upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations.
There are second.
Second.
Second by, second by Heather. Uh, all those in favor and yes, we do. And
You want me to read it off, James?
Sure.
Uh, Bauman?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Hanson, aye. Kattas?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. All right. The ayes have it. And, uh, we now adjourn to closed session, which will be a separate Zoom session. I want to thank our viewers.